In the boardroom, we have Amy, Jeanne, Shinhee, Joanna, Kelly, joining us shortly. Well, will be Margot and online we have Donna.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just checking, is there anyone else online or is it just Donna? Oh, and Roxanne, okay, all right, so. Navid was going to read the acknowledgement of the lands, but Navid is not here. So I'm going to ask someone else to read it. And I'm going to kindly ask Kelly, Kelly, would you be okay with reading it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries, I'm prepared.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Adirondack, the Haudenosaunee and the Métis. These lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions. Land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walk before us. And all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugasouls for the credit First Nation for sharing the traditional territory with us.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Shinhee, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Sorry, I'd like to have a change, a request to change the agenda.
Okay, what change would you like to make?
I'd like to pull the private session from today's meeting.
Okay, so we will be having a private session. We are going to be having a private session, so.
Can I request it to pull the private session from the agenda today?
You can't. You can request it, we'll have to make a motion to move private session from the agenda. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to move private session off the agenda. Has everyone logged on to question?
Point of order, we are in public session, so wouldn't we discuss this at the agenda for private session? We wouldn't discuss this at public session. We would discuss this at private session. Because it's not on the public agenda.
You're right.
Thank you.
Shinhee. You're testing me and I failed.
Point of clarification, Madam Vice Chair. Is it not on agenda as item 7.1?
Yes, it's a 7.1. It's revised. The latest version.
Oh. Yeah, so, okay, I'm going to look to Manager Carrillo. Can a motion be made to remove private session from the agenda?
There is an item on the agenda that corresponds to a private session item. And if a member wants to move it, they can so move.
Okay, so. There is a motion to remove private session from the agenda this evening. All those in favor of removing private session, please cast your vote. I think we all, we all still need to log in. Sure.
Can we have some discussion, maybe?
It's a private matter.
No, about removing, changing the agenda. Can we have discussion about changing the agenda?
Further changes to the agenda?
No, can we have discussion about Shinhee's motion to change the agenda?
Okay, so just keep in mind that it's a private matter. So as long as people don't breach, okay, so if. If you'd like to add yourself to the speakers list, go ahead. Amy?
Thank you, I was, I was. Kind of taken aback to find out that we were having private session this evening, especially so close to the actual meeting. To find out exactly what was on the agenda. We only just got the information yesterday and it's a rather lengthy document and not an easy read. And I certainly haven't had a lot of time to go through it myself. And so to have it on private session with so little notice is difficult for me. And we also have professional development occurring this evening. I'm just wondering how long do we think the private session will be? Because we have someone coming in for professional development at 7:30.
Joanna?
Yeah, while I. I think I understand what Amy's saying. I believe that we need to have at least a high level discussion. To kind of get our bearings. In the interest of time. So I would like to stay with the discussion in private.
Yes, I want to move the motion.
Okay. Donna?
Thank you very much. I would be struggling to remove the, to support the motion as it is. I do believe that we do need to have somewhat of a discussion. There have been some additional things that have happened this afternoon that I think need discussion. My. I am very much hoping that we would recess to do the training and then reconvene for the private session. If that's what we needed. If that's what we needed to. But I do believe that, I know that at least two trustees had sent an email requesting a private session. And I would add my voice to that. I do believe there needs to be a high level discussion because of that next week is March break. And we would not be meeting again for two weeks. And so this is not something I would like to see go that long. That that's my thinking is that I will not be supporting the motion because I do believe a discussion needs to be had.
All right, seeing no further speakers. I will call the question. Be it resolved to amend the agenda to remove private session from the agenda.
I'm not showing it on Creston yet.
Yeah, it's not available yet, Donna. It'll be available shortly.
My apologies.
It's now available for voting.
I don't have access to Creston right now, can I just vote?
Sorry, Carol, yeah, you don't have Creston, that's fine. So the question right now is whether you would like to remove private session from the agenda this evening.
I would vote yes.
All right, okay, so that.
So I vote in favor too.
Okay, thank you, Navid. So let the record show that Carol and Navid have joined us online. Okay, so that vote does not carry. Those in favor were Shin Yi, Amy, Navid, and Carol. Those against Kelly, Donna, Jean, Margot, Tanya, and Joanna. All right, is there any further discussion on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent as revised. Oh, sorry, as. I retract my statement, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Okay, so before, before we get started with the items on the agenda. I just want to recognize that today is March eighth, it's International Women's Day. And I want to recognize all the women in this room and all those watching. Thank you for everything that you do. And wishing you all a happy International Women's Day and continue on a great path forward. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. This evening, we have four approval minutes of Committee of the Whole, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And the order paper, I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the board approve the consent agenda. Jean, would you like to move the motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Yes, I will.
Okay, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to discussion items. The first item this evening is the budget workshop. We have. Roxanna, you're on the line, correct?
Good evening, yes, I am.
Hi, would you like to introduce the staff? And I will pass the floor on to you.
Yes, of course, thank you, and thank you for having us today. We have Jay Chantabong, the General Manager and Controller of Financial Services, who I believe is at the front. And will be sharing the presentation on the screen. And Vanessa Frias, which is joining us, I'm not sure if in person or online. And she is our manager of budget. And will be taking turns walking you through the presentation this evening. It's a little bit more lengthy than what the trustees will remember from the prior term. And that is because we wanted to leave the trustees with some information slides about the process and breakdown of expenses for the benefit of the new trustees. So I'm not sure if we can put the presentation on the screen, if not, I can present from here as well. All right, so on the agenda for this evening, we'll give you an overview of the budget development process and the timelines. The challenges and the information that we have from a provincial perspective. And then going into more of a board or local perspective. I'll pass it on to Jay and Vanessa to walk us through the key components of the budget. We'll be looking at some numbers throughout this presentation, just keep in mind, because we don't have the grants for student needs. We don't have information for next year just yet. The numbers that we're looking at in this presentation is to give you an overview of the current year and as it compares to the prior year. And then finally, we'll wrap it up with next steps as we're planning for the budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. So moving to the next slide. The budget development objectives is to align our resources, financial, human resources. To initiatives that are listed in the annual operating plan, special education plan, the capital plan. That are supporting the multi-year strategic priorities. And you will see in June that all of these plans are coming together for board approval. And they are all aligned in order to support our focus and priorities that are listed in the multi-year plan. In addition, the budget objective is to align resources in order to mitigate risk. So we are on a bi-annual basis reviewing our corporate risk profile, which is, which are the high, the top risks to the board that are impacting our ability to achieve our strategic objectives. These are provided and reported to the auto committee on an annual basis. And that report is provided to the Board of Trustees as well. We've done that report in private session in February. In addition, there are accountability measures and regulatory compliance that we have to take into account as we develop a balanced or a compliant budget. And I'll get into that in one of the other slides. So go into the next slide, please. In terms of a timeline, we start the budget process in November with the release of the provincial funding for education sector. In December, trustees received the first report on the budget development for next year. Where we have appended the funding consultation guide that was released. And the timelines for the budget as well. We're going to continue to provide reports to the board as well as presentation of the Committee of the Whole. As we have additional information being released. That particular consultation is on a provincial level. It receives a lot of input from the sector. It also receives a coordinated effort or a coordinated response from the trustee associations. The Council of the Directors of Education and the business officials. And the input is provided to Treasury Board as they develop the provincial budget. During January and February, we've been very busy working with our budget owners. Developing the base for staffing and the operating budget. As well as conducting our own internal stakeholder consultation. The budget survey was open between February seventeenth until March sixth. So we're going to be collating those responses and provide them to the trustees in a report at the April nineteenth meeting. In addition to that, this is one of the opportunities in which trustees are involved in providing some input. As well as once we have the information available. In April, we come back to the Committee of the Whole for a more wholesome discussion. Hopefully by then, we have the grants for student needs and the direction from the ministry on what next year will look like. What models of learning will have and so forth. And finally, we develop a draft budget throughout April and May. And in June, we come back to the Board of Trustees for final board, final board approval of the budget. So next slide just gives you the key dates that I've already mentioned, so I'm not going to go through them. I just wanted to mention in there that we do have the Special Education Advisory Committee. They also provide input as an advisory role in the budget. And we have a presentation scheduled for the beginning of May. So that we can take that feedback as well as we develop priorities for next year. Next slide, please. We've gone through these dates in terms of the budget survey that will come back to the board on April nineteenth. So I think we can actually move on to the next slide. And just here, what I wanted to mention, that as part of the development process. The grants for student needs which make up the most of the revenue for the board will be mostly based on enrollment. And we are providing enrollment projections to the ministry in November of every year. And that forms the basis for the release of the grants for student needs. We will be receiving an amount in terms of what our school board revenue under that grant is. However, as we're developing the budget and we have new information, updated enrollments. The budget coming forward, both on the revenue and expense side, will differ from the projection that comes from the ministry. That's just the first starting point into the process. And as I understand, the province has tabled to provide the provincial budget publicly on March twenty-third. So we're hoping very soon after that, they will be releasing the education funding as well. Next slide, please. So for the benefit of the public and our new trustees, I did speak a little bit about accountability as well as restrictions and compliance. These are some of the enveloping and reporting requirements that are embedded within the development process. We call a balanced budget, a budget where both the revenues that we receive in year and the expenses for that year equal. And we have no deficit, it's a zero, a zero difference. There's no deficit, there's no surplus, that's a balanced budget. So trustees are tasked to approve a balanced budget. However, they are also allowed to approve a compliant budget. And a compliant budget is a deficit budget of up to one percent of the provincial allocation. Which is a little bit of an updated grant for student needs. So there's a couple of allocations that are taken out of that. But overall, for our board, that means we can have a compliant budget that has a deficit of up to about seven point five million. As a board. The Board of Trustees have made a decision and with recommendation from the senior team to use our reserves. To further supplement programs and student learning and supports in the system. And to use some of that reserves in order to do so. So we have come up with a deficit compliant budget forward on purpose. In addition to that, we have to ensure that most of our staffing are mandated by class sizes, other staffing ratios or ratios based on the size, the square footage of buildings, for example. Special education and other allocations within the grants are enveloped. Which means you can only spend them on particular areas. So there have to be eligible expenses to be applied against those allocations within the grants for student needs. Capital funding has to be used for capital expenses only and so forth. So there's, there's quite a few restrictions and enveloping requirements as we apply and develop the budget. Next slide, please. Just as a quick summary, there are three required financial reporting to the Ministry of Education. Budget estimates, which is the budget development process, that's the process that we're working through right now. That gets completed three months before the actual fiscal year starts. And the fiscal year is the same as the school year, so September first to August thirty-first. At this point in time, we are basing it on two projected candidates for enrollment. I mentioned before, enrollment is the main driver of our funding. As enrollment goes up, our funding goes up. And we're looking at October thirty-first and March thirty-first. And we're basing them based on this year's candidates and putting in a variety of factors. Yields and growth, et cetera, in order to project next year's enrollment. This gets approved by the Board of Trustees by June the thirtieth of every year. And then we move into revised budgets. So in December, trustees see the revised budget about three months after the beginning of the year. At this point in time, we have the actual October thirty-first enrollment and we only project March thirty-first. At this point in time, we do have a much better idea of revenues, staffing required, et cetera. So we know better where to expect to end the year. And then finally, after the year is complete. We have the consolidated financial statements that come to the auto committee and then recommended for board approval by November fifteenth of every year. And at this point in time, we have actual revenues based on actual candidates and actual expenses to date. So that's our financial position that dictates how much surplus we have at the end of the year that we can take into account to be able to make a decision of having a compliant budget that uses some of that surplus towards initiatives in the following year. Next slide, please. So provincial, from a provincial perspective, the education sector is the second component of the provincial budget. So we are one of the largest parts of that budget. In twenty-two, twenty-three, so this current year, there was twenty-six point one billion allocated provincially. And in addition to that, there have been some additional supports provided through the year. We have seen a lot of one-time investments into the sector, whether they were through COVID Learning Recovery Fund. The extension for one year of the supports for student funds, tutoring, supports, et cetera. So that was to the tune of six hundred fifty-one provincially. We do have a couple of slides later on to just show you what that means for our board and how many resources are attached to these sources of funding. The supports for student funds, I'm just going to mention, they are funds provided by employee group. And they are tied to the collective, the central collective agreements that have expired. The ministry extended them for one year for this current year. However, with only two ratified agreements, we are not sure what will happen to the funds going forward. At this point in time, we don't have any information, we would hope to see that this continues, but we don't know for certain. We are, we also know that the ministry has been focusing on numeracy and literacy and skill trades for next year. However, we are not sure what additional funding may be provided in that regard. And based on the consultation that had looked more in terms of reducing administrative burden, reducing times to complete capital projects and joint use of schools. That gives an indication that there shouldn't be a lot of changes to the grants for student needs from what we've seen this year. So we shouldn't be expecting something drastically different in terms of our funding for the sector. Although we do know the transportation allocation has been reviewed by a provincial working committee. And that will be implemented starting next year. So there will be boards that will receive more and boards that will receive less funding. It's being phased in. My understanding is so that it will minimize the impact for the time being. Having said that, at the end of that phase in approach, there will be changes in the funding for each board. Next slide, please. So I think I mentioned some of these, I'm just going to quickly see. One of the concerns that. One of the concerns that we have is that in the past, the Grants for Student Needs has always contained a component for keeping up with costs in inflation. And that typically has been 2%. A couple of times for the transportation, there was a 4% component. However, given the cost escalation, the inflation that we've seen lately, the supply chain issues that we are experiencing, we are seeing 7% to 10% increase in a lot of our capital maintenance projects, contractual services, as well as goods that we procure. So that will not cover the pressures that we've seen this year. We are also unsure about the timing of the next capital priorities funding announcement. We certainly have business cases ready to be submitted for the next projects. And we are also looking at a number of elementary schools in Oakville and Milton and a secondary school in Oakville that are in the process of being built. And the process has been taking longer than in the past. So that is also a concern for us being a growth board. Next slide. So from a board perspective, at this point in time, we are assuming class sizes remain unchanged. The Grants for Student Needs or the GSN, as you hear us mention, will be similar to last year, so not a lot of drastic changes. From an enrollment perspective, we are seeing a slight decline in the elementary panel as we have a lower enrollment in the kindergarten grades, bigger classes in grade eight moving into secondary panels. And we've seen that shift over the last few years. However, we're seeing an overall increase when we look at that net impact, which is starting to pick up after the pandemic. The international students are still below the pre-pandemic levels, but we are starting to see a bit of an uptick. And there are efforts to, marketing efforts to promote our school board to international students and bring our base up, as well as have a more diverse group of international students and placed across all of our secondary schools. We are on a good note, seeing the recovery of facility rentals and interest expense, as well as school-generated funds. So there's fundraising activities at the school level, so we're happy to see that be brought up. As a school board, we mostly get funded under the provincial budget. So we don't have a lot of other funding sources to be able to complement our programs and resources that we need to support our students. So a couple of those areas where we do have other revenue are the facility rentals and the interest expense, which don't come with any strings attached in terms of limitations. I've mentioned before that from a school perspective, a new construction, we are currently finalizing Milton Number 12 Public School and starting to plan the construction of Milton 13, as well as northeast Oakville Number 3. And there's enrollment pressures on the secondary level as well in Oakville. And we have, we're in the process of planning for a secondary school in northeast Oakville. One of our biggest concerns, and I think it's on the next slide, is the one-time funding that has been provided to address post-pandemic gaps and priorities. And we don't know whether or not they continue. So we'll go to the next slide. And here you can see the magnitude of those, of those funding sources. So we have the Support for Student Funds which are attached to collective agreements, as I've mentioned before, to the tune of 1 point, of 6.1 million. What we do know is that the caretakers, so about half a million through our QP ratified agreement, they have indeed secured this funding source to continue throughout their new contract. But we don't know about the other, the other groups and where they will end. So we certainly hope that when the Grants for Student Needs are announced, because there are no ratified agreements for the rest of the groups, that the ministry considers an extension until such time that everybody had time to finalize their negotiations with the central table. That is our hope. By any means, it's not any, we don't have any information or confirmation. So we are looking right now at, you know, about 5.6 million of that not returning. From a COVID perspective, the COVID Learning Recovery Fund and the tutoring supports, they have amounted to about $15 million. And that is significant support that was provided for one-time investments into our system. In addition to that, the board has dedicated 7.5 million in surplus in order to further support with one-time initiatives. So that's a total of 21.1 million of funding that is supporting mostly staffing that are facing students and supporting students in the classroom. That is limited in nature. So the next slide will show the staffing that are covered by employee group through these sources of funding. You will see there's 227 positions that we have covered with this 21 million in lost revenue. Now, having said that, we are hoping that first column, the Support for Student Funds or the SSF, will continue. And we are going to also propose with trustees' support to continue to use some of our surplus to provide much-needed resources in areas of support, in areas of priority, such as learning recovery, mental health and special education, for example. So I'm not sure whether there's any questions up to this point.
Yes, there is. I will start with Amy.
Thank you. Hi, Roxanna. I'm wondering how much we have in our surplus right now. I know that you mentioned last week's board meeting that we have a very tight budget for this fiscal. And I just want to make sure that we're, our surplus is enough to carry us through.
Absolutely. So I think I'll answer that question in two parts. When we're looking at the surplus as a board, so the accumulated surplus that we have is around 78 million. It has been separated by trustees. It's been allocated or encumbered for particular uses. And a portion, a big portion of that is for support of the multi-year plan. That's the one that we access in the 7.5 million, or most of that, I should say, because some of it is committed capital projects. But most of the 7.5 million is from that encumbered surplus to promote the multi-year plan initiatives. The second part of that question relates to how much room we have in the current budget in order to be able to stay on budget, I believe. So when, when we proposed the 7.5 million, we went very, very close to that compliance room. So that means we cannot, we have to closely monitor how much we spend in the budget so that we don't go over compliance. If we feel we go over compliance, we need board approval and ministry approval to, to access further reserves. We could, but it requires us to come back to the board and to receive ministry approval to spend more than 1% of our reserves in one year. Within our budget, we always like to have, to the tune of about $1 million, a contingency fund. And in the revised budget, there were 800,000 of that contingency fund remaining. And currently, we've been allocating it to various resources and various priorities that have come forward since then. And so we have a very small amount of that remaining. So that's, I think, where we're now looking for our analysis for the interim report as of February 28th. We are looking at areas of savings within other areas of the budget so that we can have a bit of that contingency carry us through the year and not go over compliance.
Thank you for that.
Joanna.
Thank you. Hello, Roxanna. I'm concerned by the fact that the ministry is not placing mental health as a priority for the 2324 year, given that, you know, everybody's saying that mental health is going to be the next pandemic. And I'm also concerned about our historical underfunding of special, special education. So do we have, it sounds like you have a plan to be able to use some of the money from the surplus. Is that enough? Or do we have a plan to put forward something in our consultation?
Trustees, someone has the floor.
Sounds like you have a plan to use part of the surplus funding for mental health. Would the same be true for special ed? Do we have enough? And I know there's a consultation piece around the budget and funding from the ministry. Should we be submitting some kind of advocacy piece around that?
Thank you for the question. So a couple of thoughts as well. When we are speaking about a consultation to the ministry and advocacy for special education and mental health, I think we will have to do it in the November timeframe when that ministry consultation comes out. Even though they are, and we've mentioned it. So the trustee associations, the council, the Council of, or their directors of education and business officials have mentioned the crisis when it comes to mental health and the special education funding that has not been keeping up with the increase in needs. So we have mentioned it there. If you want as a board to provide or from CAC to provide consultation or feedback to the ministry, the best time to do it is then. I'm saying it because at that point in time, they can provide that information to the Treasury Board to start making decisions on what the provincial budget shapes out to be. At this point in time, I think they're almost done. I think the decisions have been made. So we'll see what comes out. And I don't know, I don't believe there's changes in the Grants for Student Needs. I don't know how much support they would provide by means of timed investments that we could allocate towards these priorities. On this particular chart, you'll see that we do have significant number of resources in special education teachers, educational assistants. We have mental health resources in children, youth counselors and social workers that have been one-time funded. I will mention that one, one thing. There has been a bit of an increase in the Grants for Student Needs last year. And so a commitment towards mental health. There's been a little bit of an increase. I, I will turn to Jay to remind me of the, I think the amount was around 300,000 that was added on a permanent basis.
Yeah, I can confirm that's, that's correct. So some of the one-time funding from the prior year in the form of PPS were moved to the GSN for the current year. So it's a good sign that it'll continue on beyond this year. But we'll see when the GSN is released.
Thank you. However, we do have a significant funding gap. I absolutely agree.
All right, Kelly.
Thank you, through you to Roxanna. You mentioned that there's a provincial working group looking at the transportation allocation. I believe there's been a transportation working group for the 10, maybe last 20 years. So is this one actually going to try and result in a new funding model? And is it going to be based on the audits that they've done in the past? I know that we were like a model board compared to other boards. And so we have exceeded many of the expectations that were placed on boards in their criteria. So is that going to be part of the allocation or do you have any of the information?
I do sit on that provincial committee, well, this provincial committee. I know it's been in the making a few times. So in the past, I wasn't part of it. But this past year, I've been part of this committee. And there has been at the table, there's been representation from across the sector, including school boards, consortium, transportation consortiums and bus operators. So they could hear all of their voices, as well as discussion on the eligibility factors, distance, et cetera. And there have been two simulations. So our consortiums, all consortiums in the province have been required to provide transportation simulation on routes, number of routes, length, et cetera, based on given parameters. So all that information was provided twice to the ministry. They've put together a funding formula. They've shared some of those elements with us. However, I can't really speak to them yet because they were in draft and they were under confidential share. So we wait to see what comes out of it.
Can I just follow up?
But I'm told it is going to be implemented for the new school for fiscal year.
So this year?
Yes.
You believe it?
This coming year.
Well, that's really great news because, I mean, this has been a long time coming since we've been based on a 1998 funding rate, even though there's been some increases due to cost of living. This would be really nice because I know we're significantly overspent in our transportation budget, that if, even if we could just get funded to the amount it's supposed to be. I mean, so thank you for being on the committee and keeping our voice there. And I look forward to hearing the results when they come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I can just add, one of the cautions I have, and I don't know where they're going to land. At the very beginning of this work, they did make public that they didn't want to increase the transportation allocation overall, that it might be a redistribution. As we went through this process, we really tried to show them it's not enough. I'm hoping that resonated and that with the decision makers. And that will be part of what we see in the grants coming forward. If however, it's a reallocation of the current funding, then we will have a big problem on our hands.
It sounds like we might be advocating again for, if that happens and we have to reallocate to really be advocating because of the lack of funding we get to our board.
Jean.
Thank you very much. Just first of all, I want to offer apologies to Trustee Oliver. We get excited over here when we talk about money and reserve and keeping money around. And it's, it's our audit background, Roxanna, sorry. But anyway, and just in light of the comments made by Trustee Amos about the transportation. When we don't get the money in time to build the schools, our transportation money goes up because we're transporting more people to holding areas. And so it's, it's frustrating. But my questions are on the compliant budgets. We have new trustees on our board and I just wondered if you would review how many years we have had to file a compliance budget with the ministry?
So in terms of a compliant budget, I believe as, as long as I've been here, we've had a compliant budget. And my predecessor also had compliant budgets in the past. So yes, we've been using those reserves to supplement for a number of years. As I mentioned, we're doing it on purpose with good reason. You know, we could have a balanced budget. If trustee's direction is have a balanced budget, we could have a balanced budget. But when we come forward and we listen to all the stakeholders, including the Board of Trustees and areas of priority that we're hearing tonight and we're making notes of these concerns and questions, The recommendation comes because we can, we have a good financial situation to use some of that funding towards additional resources that support our students.
Thank you. Follow up please? And it's actually not a follow up so much as just a second question about the reserve. It's my understanding that the ministry is not refunding boards who had to use some of their reserve monies during the two-year period, two and a half, some odd year period of the pandemic. And I'm just wondering, did we have to dip into our reserves to get, to make our way through that time period?
We, we have, we dipped into the reserves less than we expected because we have advocated with the ministry to provide us with some relief funding. When we realized the pandemic had such a significant impact through decline of enrollment, families didn't know what to do and they just pulled their students altogether out of the school boards. So we've lost enrollment at the time, almost 1,000 students that we didn't expect. And when we did the staffing and when we did all of those, we were counting on those students and then they didn't show up. And then in addition, there were requests for lower class sizes, et cetera, as we're navigating the pandemic. So we've kept those in place. And the ministry had decided during that year to allow us to have that relief fund as if we did not lose that enrollment. So that was very, very helpful. That was a one-year only. However, we, you know, we are getting, because we are getting some one-time investment that we needed to continue to address the post-pandemic challenges. And, and I believe next year is going to be challenging as well. And I really hope that we continue to see the support coming from the ministry, or we'll have to use a lot of our reserves.
Thank you very much.
Amy.
Thank you through you to Roxanna. I'm, I'm actually on the same thread as Jean there with the, how many years have we been at this? It seems like ever since the Ford government was elected, we've had compliant budgets. And so it begs the question, if we're having to dip into our surplus year after year after year just to provide the basics, at some point, we're going to run out of surplus. And then we're no longer going to be able to continue to provide the basics. And I know that we've been asking the Ministry of Education to review the funding model for many, many years. Before I was even a trustee, I can remember CAC going to meetings with the Ministry of Education discussing special education funding and the way that that's done. And when they came back with their solution, we actually ended up with less money. So I, I don't know how it is. We are expected to continue to thrive in an environment that is unsustainable. And I, I'm greatly concerned that the ministry is not stepping up and realizing the importance of public education. Publicly funded education is so important to the success and the future of our province. And I'm, I'm really stymied that every year, in the last five years, we have had compliant budgets where we've had to use our surplus money, which is supposed to be there in case of emergency, on, on just getting through the year. And so I, there's no question there, but it's my commentary and it really annoys me. Thank you.
All right, Roxanna, there are no further questions. Is there anything else you need to add?
No, we can go on quickly through the remaining slides if we have time.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to skip the enrollment slides because I've already told you what the enrollment trends we are seeing. And we've been a growth board with the exception of the pandemic year. And I, I've talked to you about the two candidates that make up the average daily enrollment calculation. So we'll go straight to the revenue slides, please, Jay, and I'll pass it on to you.
All right, thanks Roxanna and evening, everybody. So I'm going to walk you through some of the revenue slides and then I'll pass it off to Vanessa to speak on expenses. So building off of enrollment and where that comes into play is largely, as Roxanna mentioned, into the revenue and mainly our provincial grants, grants for student needs. So our GSN for short, we'll also refer to it that way. So this pie chart shows you the largest chunk of our funding, nearly 89% is our transfer student needs. So the large blue slice here. While some of these smaller but still significant chunks or slices are our deferred capital contribution for amortization of assets and other fees and revenues, which I'll speak on on the next slide. And then the other smaller ones being school-generated funds, federal grants, and investment income. So on the next slide, it lists these same slices out. Then it provides a little more description to a couple of the revenue sources. So again, the largest driver of our enrollment, of our revenue is enrollment in the form of our GSN, as well as other factors such as square footage of our schools and whatnot. The other, the other one to mention is the other fees and revenues. So there's a few sources there that make up the 3.6% of our total revenue. So it'll be tuition fees, rental income, and education development charges, the largest chunks there. So moving on to the next slide, the next few will get into the GSN and break it down a little further. And I'll go over some of the larger allocations within the GSN. So the first one here, the People Foundation Grant makes up around half of our GSN. And what this does is support essentially all the resources within the classroom as well as in and out of the school. So the, the main ones being classroom teachers, supply teachers, early childhood educators, educational assistants, and, and also non-staffing resources such as learning materials and whatnot. So then the next allocation on the next slide, our School Foundation Grant. So that, again, supports the schools directly in, in the form of our school administration staff. So our principals, vice principals, and office staff. And then the next list, which will be on this slide as well as the next, are supplemental grants. So these supplemental grants will support our programming, our maintenance of facilities, as well as transportation and capital debt. So the, the largest ones on this slide, Special Education, which was mentioned earlier by trustee Oliver, as well as Learning Opportunity Grants. So on the next slide, some of the larger ones here are the cost adjustments for teacher qualifications and experience. So that's essentially a top-up for teachers who are above the funded average. So we receive additional funding to make up the difference between the average and where they are on the salary grids. Some other large ones, Student Support for Students Fund, which Roxanna mentioned. And again, it's a timed funding depending on central negotiations. Another large one, the School Facility Operations Grant. So that essentially is supporting all our school facility needs such as maintenance, utilities, caretakers, and so forth. So moving on to the next slide. So this is a table showing our revenues year-over-year, current year versus prior year. So the largest, again, is the GSN there to the tune of 767 and a half million budgeted for this year. Now that's an increase of over 26 million over the prior year. Now, there's a couple of reasons for that. One being the COVID, one of the COVID PPFs actually moved from the line, the line below that, prior grants other, up to the GSN. So that's the COVID Learning Recovery Fund that was mentioned on prior slide. So a good chunk of that is attributed to the increase as well as benchmark increases for salary as well as non-salary allocations. Another large one is school-generated funds. So we expected to return to more normal levels of around 20 million, so over the prior year. So that's the 8 million there. And then two others being the amortization of deferred capital contribution. So that is essentially offsets our amortization expense for the increase in new, new school sites as well as renovations. So we have to amortize that over the life of the assets. And this is a direct offset of that non-cash expense. And then the other to mention is under other fees and revenues. So the largest contributor to this increase of nearly 5 and a half million is in our education development charges. So we expect to collect more EDCs this year compared to prior year. So all in all, our total revenue budget for this year is 866 and a half million dollars. And then before we move on to expenses, if you have to take any questions before passing off to Vanessa.
Yeah, we've got a couple of speakers. Kelly.
Thank you through you to Jay. What are school-generated funds? Is that the funds that school councils and cafeterias and that kind of thing make at the schools? Or what is it?
Yes, so it's essentially all, all the revenues collected at the school level and, and kind of initiated at the school level. So those are the revenues collected for field trips, for school activities and whatnot.
So to follow up, so it, I can understand it being in the revenue stream, but those funds generally are raised for specific items. So are they captured that way in, when you're budgeting? Or because, I mean, you've got $20 million, but that's not $20 million that we could spend because it's already being allocated generally by like school, is like school trips and other things within the schools, correct?
You're correct, yes. So the 20 million that we budget here on the revenue side will be mirrored on the expense side for another 20 million. So it's a net zero impact to our, to our bottom line, to our, to our accumulated surplus. And you're right, that it's specific for those purposes and are used that way.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Marco.
Thank you through you to Jay. I noticed that you have other fees and revenues at 3.6%. So I'm just wondering, so I know, I guess it was a couple of years ago, we had, I'm going to say it was Sabatra from Gary Allen sent her come and talk about the revenue that's generated through their programming there. So does that fall under that piece? So where does that, I'm just wondering where that goes? Because I know that's seen as somewhat of a financially lucrative piece of our board is looking at what sort of profits Gary Allen Alternative or Continuing Education is able to make. And I'm just wondering where that falls? And if that 3.6% is a static number or if that fluctuates depending on what we're doing?
Yeah, good question. So that Link ESL program specifically, it's funded by two different sources, one being the federal grant. So that's actually on its own line here on the, the third line down to tune up almost 2 million. And then there's a portion that's provincially funded. So it's kind of grouped in with the provincial grants other line. It's a smaller portion compared to the federal. So between the two, it's on those two lines.
So does that fluctuate depending on the number of people that enroll? So how does that, does it change or does it stay static over time? And is there a way that we are looking at how we're marketing that sort of service that we have to increase the revenue generated through it?
Yeah, so the federal portion of it is actually on a five-year contract. So it is a fairly stable year-to-year amount. However, we are able to put in proposals to the federal government to ask for more funding if, if we require it. So if, if there's more learners that we need to have resources to accommodate, then Super Padra, in this case, would put those proposals to them, to the government, to the federal government and ask for more funds, which we have done on a year-to-year basis.
So just a quick, so is it an income generator or is it just funding per the needs of the students?
It's not an income generator per se because it is a budget-neutral type of program. So the money, the funds we receive for it are, are spent on that purpose and it's in a perfect role. It's a net zero.
Jean.
Thank you very much through the vice chair to Jay. Could you tell us a little bit about the investment income? I see that there's a drop of about 473,000. I'm thinking that that's because we must have so much less money to invest, even though at this point in the game, there's some good investment opportunities and returns out there. So could you talk to us about that?
Sure, Ken. So just to back up to when we prepared the budget this time last year, essentially, when we came up with 877,000 there. So at that time, we worked with the best information we had. And at the time, the rates were a lot lower for investing. So between that time and revised estimates, we did update it to essentially recognize that we, we have another approximately, I believe, about a million dollars that we would expect to receive in this current year. So at revised estimates, we did actually increase this to reflect that because the prime rates did increase multiple times last calendar year. So it was recognized, it's just not showing here because we're trying to compare budget to budget or estimates to estimates.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and one last question, under total revenue, I just have difficulty trying to read that line. Less transfer to, from, accumulated surplus. What I'm thinking is this indicates the amount of money that we hope to move into accumulated surplus. Is that correct?
So this line essentially is a transfer of the revenues that are out of compliance items. So the big one being education development charges, because that can only be used for land transactions. So that is within the other fees and revenue line. It, it's one of the items that make up that 30.4 million dollars. So whatever we collect for EDCs needs to be transferred to surplus. We can't use it towards operating funds. So that's why you see, and you're correct, we're transferring it to surplus in that line.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay, back to you, Jay.
All right, so I'll be handing off to Vanessa for, to walk us through expenses.
Thank you, everybody. So the, going through the expenses, as we can see in the pie chart here, the largest area where we spend our money is under the instruction category at 77.5%. The next one being pupil accommodation, 14.1%. So the next slide will go over what's included in those categories. The first, so under instruction, so our biggest area of where we spend our money, being the classroom teachers, supply staff, EAs, basically in the, expenses in the, spent in the classroom in front of the students and, and in running, and running the schools. The next category, the administration, we, we spend about 2.1%. And those are expenses related to the trustees, the directors and superintendents, and board administration departments like finance, HR, and IT. Transportation, we spend about 2.5%. And that's just, as it says, the transportation expenses. Pupil accommodation at 14.1%. And that is relating to the school operations and maintenance. So anything to upkeep the buildings and sites that we have. And the, a large part of that category as well is amortization. And then in, under other expenses, at 3.8%, we have the school-generated fund. So that's where the offset to the, to the revenue is. And the PPF funds, so the one-time, one-time funding grants, this is, these are where we capture the expenses for those.
Vanessa? Sorry, I have one question. On that particular slide, you have the categories, but... On that particular slide, you have the categories, but it's not in alpha order. It's, what order is that in?
So this is the order in which it's reported to the ministry. So the ministry, when we do our reporting through EFIS, through the estimate cycle, revised estimate cycle, and financial cycle, the expenses are categorized in this way, and this is the order in which the forms are set up. So basically, the biggest portion being the instruction, and then it goes on to list administration, transportation, et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so overall, if we compare our expenses from current year to last year's budget, total, we have 854 million, which is an increase of 38 million from prior year budget. So instruction being the largest area increased 22.6 million. And mainly, that was, you know, the result of COVID funding that we received with more putting, more spent on FTEs in the classroom area. Under pupil accommodation, we had a 7.2 million dollar increase, and those were, and that's where utilities and maintenance costs, and those are increase in contract costs there. So now, another way to look at our expenses is look, you know, salary versus non-salary. So when we take a look at our salary and benefits, we're left with the non-salary portion of only 21%. So the salaries make up 67 and benefits 12%. And of the salaries, when we look at where it's spent, the majority, 94%, is in the instruction. So these are the classroom teachers, anyone basically in front of the students and running a classroom. And this just shows it in a list format way. So under instruction, like what are the actual salary categories or specific areas that it relates to? So like I said, classroom teachers, the EAs, ECs. And then for administration, the 2.1%, that's where, again, like we mentioned before, relates to the trustees, the directors, and running the board administration departments. And then under pupil accommodation, the salaries would include the facility service staff and caretakers and cleaning staff. So then when we look at non-salary expenses, 50% of that relates to pupil accommodation, and only 18% related to the instruction. So again, in a list format, what does that include? So for pupil accommodation, the 50% that we see, the majority of that is our costs for utilities, repairs and maintenance, cleaning supplies and maintenance contracts. Under instruction, the 18%, these are, so these are the non-salary expenses, would be any program-specific resources, staff professional development, and the spec ed and resource equipment. And then under board administration and governance, 2%, those where we have are, again, supplies, software maintenance fees, and legal and audit fees.
Vanessa, we have one question.
Yeah.
Amy?
Yeah, so I was just noting, a lot of insurance rates have gone sky-high the last couple of years. I'm wondering if that's happening with our board and exactly how much do we spend on insurance?
Yeah, so I can answer that. So yeah, the last couple of years, it's been increasing fairly, at a fairly reasonable rate, I'd say, just kind of going along with the inflation, the regular inflation rate prior to this year, actually. But that budget overall is approximately a million dollars, a million.
What was that all?
I would just mention that the insurance also takes care of all the claims. So we don't have any liability and claims and anything that comes from that representation. Our insurance is through a cooperative that has, I believe, all but one or two of the school boards and school authorities in the province. And we are pooling our risk. So at the same time, they give back. So when we have years when their investments have done well, we actually receive a check for a few hundred thousand dollars back of that premium. In the grand scheme of things, based on what we cover and the risk that it mitigates for us, it is not very expensive compared to what we would pay if we would have a private insurer who would be looking at not paying on behalf of their client, but finding ways to, you know, find loopholes, for example. So we have a very good cooperative that works in our favor. And yes, a million dollars is, it adds up to a lot, but it does cover us on all the areas of insurance across 109 locations, staff, students, volunteers, et cetera.
Thank you. If I might follow up, yes, the sticking with the rate of inflation is amazing because I'm telling you, that's not what's happening out there for other businesses and even not-for-profits. It's going up 8, 10, 12% a year the last couple of years, and it's been almost unaffordable. But you have to have it. So I'm glad that ours isn't like that.
There are no further questions at this time.
All right. And with that, I think I am going to wrap it up. This is just to show that we are at this point waiting for a lot of information, so we don't have a list of priorities for this presentation. We hope to bring that back for April, but we are considering what funding sources we can use to offset the one-time investment. So that's our biggest concern and looking at the areas of priority and where we have gaps in funding. And we'll be back on April 13th with more information, hopefully with the release of GSN, and on April 19th with the feedback, the stakeholder feedback. So there's a couple more areas where trustees will have a meaningful opportunity to provide input into the budget process once we have more of the components. With that, thank you very much for your time. I believe that's all we have for this evening.
Okay. Big thanks to you, Roxana, and your staff. So thank you, Jay, and thank you, Vanessa, for coming here this evening. And we will see you again on April 13? Yes, April 13. Thanks. Okay, it's 7:16. That clock is still wrong. And we do have a present, we do have a session at 7:30, and we have a lot more agenda items to continue. So seeing how it's 7:17, I'm thinking, Curtis, can we get through to, through a couple of these items so that way we can get through? And then I'm going to have a hard stop at 7:25 so that people can take a body break and have the presenter come in for the 7:30 session. Over to you, Curtis.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask Roxana if you would present your...
Absolutely. I believe I have two APs that are on the agenda. Third-party agreements, it's a policy and accompanying procedure, has been up for review. We did take a look from a procedure perspective. We don't recommend any changes. We've had it also reviewed by legal just in case there's any changes in terms of any of the referred regulation. However, we have some clarifications on the procedure in terms of centralizing the memorandum of understanding requirements through the superintendent responsible for community and partnership portfolio. So that will streamline the process and ensure that we have a full executed register for the MOUs and not just for the contract. All the contractual obligations are maintained through procurement under my area. So we do have that centralized. So now we will have the two registers for the two type of documents within that AP. And there's only minor changes for the fees and fundraising AP that is on the agenda. Thank you.
Any questions for Roxana? No, okay. Curtis?
Jen, I think you can beat Roxana. You have the next ones.
Thank you so much, Curtis. So through you, vice chair to all trustees. So we're bringing forward a number of APs as well as the safe and accepting schools policy. I will say that in general, there are very minor changes to all of these. They have been reviewed and just an updated, other APs that have been updated. So perhaps some information has been, you know, correlating over to this, to one of these APs, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions on them.
Marco?
Yeah, so I'm just wanting to check, are your APs 3.2, 3.3 through to, I don't know, all of them?
3.2, 4 to 3.2, 9.
So 3.2, 3 we're going to come back to?
Yes.
Okay, so then let me take a look because I have some questions about the other one. So there's a difference between, oh, shoot, hold on one second, sorry, Jen, suspension and expulsion and exclusion. So 3.2, 9 is exclusion of students, and then we have 3.2, 4, suspension and expulsion. So can you just clarify the difference between an expulsion and an exclusion for me, please?
Yes, absolutely. So suspension or expulsion is something that we use to follow up on student discipline. So typically, there's been an, at a behavior that has, you know, been in contravention of our code of conduct, and therefore, it's resulted in some disciplinary action for a student. Versus an exclusion, which is a, there are five reasons for exclusions that we have in the board. And I'm looking across at my amazing colleague, Jonathan Joss, who was a, who was a big help in creating this procedure years ago. Things like excluding a student because of an ongoing police investigation. So that would be an example of an exclusion because we would not be in a position to render a decision on any disciplinary action. We could have exclusions due to things like needing to seek supports for students that are just entering and transitioning into a school or transitioning to a new school. We have had exclusions where there have been conditions set out. And then there also have been exclusions for things like, let's say, you're doing a student investigation, and maybe there's some needs of a student, and we don't want to just jump to disciplinary action. So we really want to focus on, it's just another option that doesn't have to do with any disciplinary action.
Okay, so a follow-up then on both pieces of that. So in the, I'm going to start with the, which one is this one? The exclusion. So I'm skipping down to where you've taken out, a safe schools personnel will be provided to support the principal and help facilitate the exclusion process. So I'm just wondering then, so I'm guessing that before there was a, like a collaboration between the principal of the school and a supervisor, and now it's just solely under the purview of the principal? I'm just wondering why that was taken out.
Let me go and look at that exact thing, and I'll help explain that. Sorry, let me just find that.
It's at the top of the second page. It says, "A safe schools personnel will be provided to support the principal and help facilitate the exclusion process. Safe school personnel report directly to the system principals for safe schools." And that's been taken out. So I'm just wondering now, with exclusions, is that then solely under the purview of the school principal or who decides that?
I'm just in the process of finding exactly. I think perhaps what we were just referring to is changing the name. We're not using system principal anymore. It's just safe schools personnel. So maybe it was just something extra was taken out. Just, I'm sorry, if you could just bear with me for one moment. Sorry, I apologize. My computer was just, I lost the agenda, and that's why I'm struggling right now. So thank you very much, Jean Gray. Okay. And I don't have a mouse on this, Jean, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, top of page three, not page two, I'm sorry.
Jen, do you want me to jump in?
Sorry, Jonathan, just give me one second, please. Thanks. Top of page three. Thank you. So it says, in, are we in the, in halt in district school board, exclusions are facilitated by the safe schools department?
Yeah, the last, the last sentence of that paragraph has been stricken out.
Safe schools personnel.
Struck, struck out?
Stricken out. So I think we just changed the wording, so it is still in there, right? Principals must consult with the superintendent of safe schools or designate prior to formalizing an exclusion. So I think it was just an extra part of a paragraph that wasn't necessarily needed because we do provide the connection you do have to have. It's not a principal's decision, and in fact, the principal cannot proceed, they have no access to the exclusion letters without reaching out directly to the safe schools department in order to obtain them. So that is sort of written in the sentence above.
Okay. And then now I'm going to jump to the suspension one. Sorry.
Okay, so it is 7:25, and we do have a speaker
I'll ask it offline.
For 7:30. And I also have questions on this policy. So I will call a recess. And, no, I'm adjourning. No, what am I doing? We're going to rise and reconvene. So with that, we have a five-minute break, and then we're going into a training session.
Our link sense, so are we going to another meeting link or are we staying on this one?
I think we're staying here.
It was more of a calendar notice. It's more for Kevin. Can we, can we end it or?
So just to recap on attendance. We have trustees Amy Jean Shinie, myself, Margo, Kelly, Navid, Joanna in person, and we have trustee Donna online.
I am here.
Hi. And with that, we're going to continue where we left off. We were reviewing the policies and administrative procedures. Curtis, I will give the floor back to you.
Thanks. I think, Jen, you still had a couple to update.
Yes, I did. Thank you. So I think we left off, we were just wrapping up the exclusion procedure. So if there were any further questions on the exclusion procedure, I'm happy to take those. And then I believe that perhaps someone had a question for me regarding suspensions. So we'll go.
Okay, Margo.
Hi, thank you for you to Jen. I'm just checking, when I look at the suspensions, I wonder if there are opportunities to have in-school suspensions.
Thank you very much, Chair Shuttleworth, and through you, Vice Chair Roche. So like other boards, we do not use in-school suspensions. These would have taken place maybe years ago, but they are not a practice that we do employ. There are a variety of other progressive disciplinary procedures that we can put in place, learning consequences that will really focus on bringing the idea of learning home rather than the consequence itself. So it's not a punitive thing. So we do not currently offer in-school suspensions.
Thank you.
So I had a question, and that was on the Safe and Accepting Schools policy. Are we still going to talk about that this evening? Or?
Yeah, so that policy initially was brought up only because it had to have a name change because it's actually not called the Safe and Accepting Schools Department. It's Safe Schools. However, it was added to the package, but we haven't actually reviewed it. So I would like an opportunity to take it back because we haven't actually engaged in a process of a formal review through the bright channels before we bring it to Committee of Holes. So if I could bring it back to Committee of the Hole, maybe in April, and then we can look to provide that update at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And the last one we have is Jenny Creed.
Thank you. Good evening through Vice Chair Roche to all trustees. Before you is the updated formerly called the Religious and Creed Accommodations Policy, AP, sorry. Some changes that we've made, two primarily. One is that we've removed the word religious because to align with the Ontario Human Rights Code, under which religion falls under the heading of creed. And therefore, we're now going to call it the Creed Accommodations Administrative Procedure. Also, we've also included some principles, important principles around Indigenous rights, especially as outlined in UNDRIP, the United Nations Declaration of Indigenous Rights. And so that's included, as it wasn't prior. And then we made some somewhat cosmetic changes in the sense that we've added links for the resources, for references. And then, of course, throughout, we had to make changes when it's referencing Religious and Creed accommodations. The processes remain the same in that any requests for Creed accommodations need to go through the principle, and it's on a case-by-case basis, as well as employees will go through employee services through HR for requests. I'll take any questions at this time, if you have any.
Okay, seeing no speakers, I do have a question. This is really minor. The revision date on there says September 2022, 2022, but we're now in March of 2023. Is there a reason why we kept it at September? Or?
Yeah, a really good question, Vice Chair Roche. We started the revision of this update in September. It started back then. So I don't know if Manager Carrillo, if you can make a comment on that. Again, the adjustment of that could be now. I know we were overdue in the update because the last effective date was 2017. Would you be able to comment on that for us?
Yep, through the Vice Chair. To Vice Chair, we can update that before it goes to the board package on March 22 to say March 2023. It was, as Superintendent Pecco said, to reflect when the revision process started, but we can update it to reflect the kind of final review date, if that's fine.
Yeah, I think that would be great because it shows when it was last revised and approved. So it makes more sense. And then it does buy you more time later on. So I'm thinking of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next speaker, Jean.
Thank you through the Vice Chair. And this is under undue hardship, that section, and I don't know how to describe what page it's on exactly, but under undue hardship. And this is maybe a question for General Manager Carrillo. I see that there's a correction on this in that they have changed the wording of his or her to reflect the word their. Now, are we using now, are we making sure that that kind of language is in all of our APs? In other words, non-gender conforming language?
I'd like to refer the question to Superintendent Petco. Her team reviewed.
You have a keen eye, Trustee Gray. Yes, we're endeavoring to do that because the pronouns, his, her, he, they, right, or sorry, he, him, and so forth are quite specific. And we see that it's exclusionary, so therefore, their would be more inclusionary.
So my question really was, on a larger scale basis, are we migrating this practice through all of our APs? That was my question.
That's a really good question.
Sorry, may I respond?
Yeah. Very good question, Trustee Gray. And that is something that we will look towards in our updates as we move forward.
Okay, there are no other speakers. And I believe we've reached the end of all the policies and APs. So as a reminder to all trustees, that the revised APs will appear at the next board meeting under the consent agenda. And the only policy that will appear for decision at this point will be the third-party agreements policy, which will appear for decision for April 19. All right. That brings us up to 4.0 committees. And we all go through the different committees to see if there are any updates. The trustees, professional development planning. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. We've sent out a survey to narrow down what kind of communications professional development people want. All trustees, except for one, have responded to the survey. And I don't know who the one is because it's anonymous. So if you are the one, please respond to the survey so that we can close it down. We are also bringing our terms of reference forward, as promised, back when we did striking committees, that all standing committees would review their terms of reference. So our terms of reference will be coming to the next board meeting.
I have one question. So Amy, are you now the chair of the committee? Because it was Donna before.
Yes, yeah. I am the chair of the committee and.
Okay.
Joanna is the vice chair? Are you the vice chair? I think you're the vice chair. And Margo has been pinch hitting as secretary, but she said she's not doing it anymore.
Meeting by meeting.
Meeting by meeting. Meeting by meeting. So, yeah, that's our structure now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any questions of that committee? No? So if you're the lone trustee, please reply to the survey. Next up is the Governance Document Review Committee.
Yes, thank you. We have brought the Code of Conduct Policy and Governance Procedure forward. At the last committee of the whole, it has passed through trustees' first agenda and will come to a decision on the 22nd of March. We're starting to look at the policy and procedure framework policy. Having just very quickly gone through the standing committee section of the committees and appointments governance procedure, we got through that very quick order, and that will be coming for a decision in April.
All right. Any, anyone with questions? Okay, seeing none. Self-assessment committee. Kelly?
The committee had its first meeting this week, last week? I don't remember. Days run together. We determined our terms of reference and are going to request some time in one of the soon Committee of the Holes that has to develop a new rules of the road as an agreement between trustees. And we will share the information from past term, but we, as a group, will need to develop a new rules of the road.
Any questions for that committee? All right, seeing none. I know there's no other committees on this agenda, but I know we have some other committees that may be able to provide some updates. So Jean.
Thank you very much. By popular selection, I guess, tonight, I think we have narrowed down or arrived on a common date and time for the Ad Hoc Inspire Award Committee. There's only one person that has not indicated they're available. I will be reaching out to them to see if I can get their flexibility on this. But anyway, people, could you mark, please, the March 20 at 3:00 PM as being the date for the Inspire Award Ad Hoc Committee? I thank Co-Chair Roche, who has already submitted some things to me. I also received some things from trustee Amos today. And so we will, you know, take these ideas and all the ideas of everybody that comes. This will be a meeting that will take place here at the board. I'm understanding that I have to get some paperwork because an agenda needs to be published. I will take care of that. But it will be a hybrid meeting where those of you who are not able to attend in person will be able to attend online. The second thing I wanted to mention here is a reminder to the people that are on the Protocol Committee that we meet at 12:00 noon tomorrow. And I just, did we decide if that was going to be an in-person or a, it's an online meeting? Okay? And who's setting up the online? Margo, are you setting up the online for the protocol meeting tomorrow at noon?
I can.
Okay. I don't think we established a particular chair. I took minutes the last time, but.
Yeah, so I think I was chair and.
Okay.
Yep, so that snuck up on me. So I have it here. Protocol group at noon.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Shinie.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And today, I want to introduce an event of the Parent Involvement Committee. And on Saturday, April 29, Parent Pick Committee, we will have a 2023 Parent Conference at LC McGill in Milton. We invite all parents and all trustees to participate in this event. This event, this year, we have a theme, nurturing the whole child, mind, body, and spirit. And this year, the keynote speaker is Dr. Jean Clinton. Yes.
Jean Clinton.
Yeah, Jean Clinton. And we encourage the parents and students to participate, to join our volunteer team to work together for this event. And in this event, we will have, we will have a presentation. So we ask which trustee can help us to do the presentation at this event.
Kelly, can you turn on your mic?
I have one that we've done in the past, so that's already been created. So I'm quite willing to help with it or whatever.
Okay, that's great.
So Shinie, are you looking for trustee volunteers?
Yeah, volunteer to do the presentation this year.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And we both will be there anyway because we are part of that committee.
Yeah, and Kelly, I'll be there too, so I can pitch in.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shinji. So, and as trustees, you are all invited to pick, so it's a great way to meet community members, parents, and it's always a great annual conference. So only good things to say about pick. All right, Amy.
Yes, I just wanted to remind Committee Chairs that agendas must be given into Jean at least 48 hours prior to your meeting so that she can post them, because all of our committee meetings are public, and they must be posted within 48 hours before the meeting starts. As well as that, the Chair must be physically present at the JWS. If you're chairing that meeting, you must be physically present here in case there is public. That's, those are the rules as set forth in legislation. No, for committee meetings.
Even ad hoc committees?
Even ad hoc committee meetings. They are open to the public. That's why I'm reminding everyone. Yes, I'm 100% sure about that. 100% sure.
Yeah.
Does that mean that our meeting tomorrow shouldn't go ahead because we have not advertised it?
I'm just cautioning that going forward, it would be advisable to make sure that the agenda is in Manager Carrillo's hands in advance. I myself have forgotten on an occasion and kicked myself about it afterwards. But if your Chair cannot be present, then perhaps you need to select a Chair pro tempore who can be present so that the meeting can proceed.
Kelly?
Through you to the Director, is it possible to check whether that rule actually applies to subcommittees and that kind of thing?
Okay, we will. Go back to you.
It's in legislation. We had it checked by the lawyer when we did our appointments and committees, Policy and Governance Procedure, last fall. And the lawyer said we had to because we tried to get around it, and the lawyer said we have to do it that way. That was Gillian Tukaturna.
Amy, I'm not arguing with you. I just asked if he could check, okay? Thank you, because I don't recall that.
All right, are there any other committee updates? Okay, there are none. That brings us to trustee questions and comments. And there is no one on the speakers list. All right, moving right along. That brings, takes us up to public questions, and the public is able to ask questions via a form on our website. And checking the site, there are no questions this evening. Fantastic. And that brings us into other, and it is a private session. So with that, we're now going into private to conduct the next matter. It's on the agenda. So... Private session.
I so move.
All right, are there any objections? Okay, seeing none. We are now in private session. And no one's getting a body break.